So I think we are now in session. I think we are online. Are we online? Thank you very much. Good evening. I'd like to welcome you to the City Council meeting this evening. And the first thing we will do is have the land acknowledgement. And the City of Arcata acknowledges that the lands we are located on are the unceded ancestral lands of the Wiat tribe. The land that Arcata rests on is known in the Wiat language as Gudini, meaning over in the woods or among the redwoods. Past actions by state, federal governments removed the Wiat and other indigenous people from the land and threatened to destroy their cultural practices. The City of Arcata acknowledges the Wiat community, their elders, both past and present, as well as future generations. And this acknowledgement seeks to aid in dismantling the legacy narrative of settler colonialism. So I would like to ask you if you would like to stand for this flag salute. Thank you. Whoops. Thank you. May we have roll call, please?
Mayor Stillman.
Present.
Vice Mayor White.
Here.
Councilmember Schaefer.
Here.
Councilmember Atkins Salazar.
Here.
Councilmember Matthews.
Here.
All present?
Thank you very much. And we had a closed session meeting before we came to the council meeting tonight, and we have nothing to tell you about for that closed session. So the next thing we're going to go into is ceremonial matters. And we have a proclamation declaring the City of Arcata a sanctuary city for Two-Spirit, Transgender, Nonconforming, and Intersex people on August 20th, 25. And Meredith Matthews, council member, will read that proclamation. Thank you.
I'm so happy to be able to do this. Thank you. So this is a proclamation declaring the City of Arcata a sanctuary city for Two-Spirit, Transgender, Nonconforming, and Intersex people dated August 20, 25. Whereas gender diverse people such as Two-Spirit, Transgender, Gender Nonconforming, and Intersex Two-S TGI have existed throughout history and cultures, including in the local Humboldt area where the Wiat tribe uses the term of "gumel," which means "both together." And whereas the City of Arcata acknowledges and values its Two-Spirit, TGI residents, staff, and visitors who contribute to a vibrant community and deserve dignity and respect. And whereas over 1,970 anti-LGBTQ+ bills have been introduced nationally between 2023 and 2025 disproportionately targeting individuals and aiming to restrict their health care, participation, recognitions, and rights. And whereas the City of Arcata reaffirms its commitment to supporting Two-S TGI individuals by upholding access to gender-affirming care, recognizing the improved mental health and wellbeing such care provides. And whereas healthcare professionals and individuals seeking or assisting with lawful gender-affirming care in Arcata should be shielded from criminal, civil, or professional penalties. Whereas surveys show that Two-S TGI youth face mental challenges, feel unsafe at school, and fear housing loss due to anti-queer bias in legislation. And the Human Rights Watch has found that bans on gender-affirming care violate fundamental human rights. And whereas the City of Arcata will not tolerate hate, discrimination, and harassment during the Two-S TGI individuals and reaffirm the inherent worth and dignity of all community members, and now therefore be it resolved that the City of Arcata recognizes gender-affirming healthcare as a matter of health, privacy, and equality, and will protect access to such care for all residents to the fullest extent permitted by the law. And now therefore be it further resolved that no city resources, including Saftheim or property, shall be used to detain, investigate, or penalize anyone seeking, providing, or supporting gender-affirming care. And the City of Arcata shall not cooperate with or provide information to out-of-state entities regarding lawful gender-affirming healthcare or mental healthcare performed in California. And now therefore be it further resolved that the City of Arcata will promptly investigate threats, violence, discrimination, or hate crimes targeting Two-S TGI individuals, and work to ensure equitable access to healthcare, housing, education, and employment. And now therefore be it further resolved that the City of Arcata hereby reiterates its commitment to civil rights and equal protections and declares itself a sanctuary city and a place of safety for Two-S TGI people dated August 6, 2025. Standing by Alex Stillman, our mayor. And we have Cerberus and Alexis, and it looks like we have Julie here, too, to accept this. Thank you so much.
So thank you for coming forward.
Thank you. Hello, my name is Cerberus, and my pronouns are they/them/they's. I'm a youth advocate from Queer Humboldt. I'm also a transgender, mixed Filipino-American, disabled, and queer community member. I live on unceded Wiat land, also known as Eureka. Like many of my loved ones in this community, I fled to Humboldt County in search of care, access, and community. I came to Humboldt County in 2018 as a student at Cal Poly Humboldt, and as I pursued my degree and grew, I found myself a home here. Humboldt County was the first place I spoke my first chosen name out loud to a crowd. It was where I first found and accessed gender-affirming care. I was able to come here and make a life for myself. And I say that not only in gratitude to what this county provided me, but also in recognition of how lonely and difficult my transition was. I did not have elders to guide me, nor did I know where the community I desperately needed was. I had general tips and advice, but so much of the beginning of my transition was alone, difficult, and full of barriers. I work every day so that the youth that come after me have more than I did, so that they know where they live is a safe place that accepts and nourishes them, so that when people flee here, there is cushion for their arrival, and so that those who grew up here know that their home has their best interests at heart. This proclamation is meaningful for so many reasons. It is so rare as a trans person to feel like someone truly has my back or has my best interests at heart. In a political climate that seeks to demonize, erase, and eradicate Two-S TGI folks, it means something when the local government says, "We have your back, and we want you here. We value you as human beings and as members of our community." There is so much pressure from Western society not to be a trans person, to not transition, to not know and love ourselves. When your local government stands up and declares that it will do its utmost best to ensure our safety, our right to life, love, and happiness, that carries weight for the trans and gender diverse community. It leads by example, showing other cities, counties, states, the nation, and the world that safeguarding the natural diversity of human beings is how we maintain our safety, and that Two-S TGI folks are worthy of taking seriously and defending. This proclamation lays groundwork that will continue to improve the safety of Two-Spirit, Transgender, Gender Diverse, and Intersex people in this county, and for that, I am grateful. You have no idea the lives you save just by taking us seriously and promising to continue to fight for what is just. I'm proud to live in a community so diverse and loving, and I hope to grow even prouder as we work collectively to build brighter futures for us all. With that, I'll pass it off to my coworker Alexis.
Thank you.
First off, I want to thank the City of Arcata for showing up for the local Two-S TGI community today and passing our proclamation to make Arcata a sanctuary for Two-Spirit, Transgender, Gender Nonconforming, and Intersex, or Two-S TGI people. My name is Alexis. My pronouns are he/him. I am a transgender man. I am Latino. I am from Los Angeles, a youth advocate here at Queer Humboldt, and a fellow community member and resident on Wiat territory that grew, and I grew to feel at home here in Arcata for the past three years. This proclamation is a big deal, as it signifies resistance against the oppressive movement against Two-Spirit and TGI folks across the nation. It acknowledges our right to exist safely and be equally deserving of happiness, and it sends the message that my local government can make the necessary efforts to take action and accountability to serve my fellow Two-S TGI community members. In our society, the Two-S TGI community receives little to no assistance, relief, or dignity. We have seen a concerning trend of increasingly normalized violence against our communities in recent years, which is why the current hostile attitudes towards us nationwide is not at all surprising. It is exhausting to read the same headlines. Headlines calling my people all sorts of disparaging names to fuel false narratives that scapegoat us, that were too strong to participate in gender sports yet too weak to join the military, that were preying on women in restrooms or children at drag shows despite no credible evidence, that were grooming today's youth with gender ideology, or paying doctors and scientists to approve the mutilation of body parts, which discredits the years of scientific research to back Two-S LGBTQIA+ inclusive curriculum in schools, and require doctor's appointments and therapy sessions to permit once-monitored access to gender-affirming care. That our rights to accessible and safe gender-affirming care are being taken away when studies have shown that taking away such care does not make Two-S TGI kids less queer, but it will increase the likelihood of them dying from suicide or turning to harmful coping mechanisms. Headlines that there's a new court case debating over policies that are meant to protect us from discrimination in schools, workplaces, housing, employment, medical settings, et cetera. Two-S TGI, both nationwide and locally, are increasingly becoming victims of violence or murder in domestic and public settings, and suffering disproportionately from poor mental health as a result of rampant transphobia. Imagine being a young Two-S TGI and hearing such headlines daily, along with other terrifying local and global news, that leaves you feeling less and less hopeful about your survival. That is the reality for Two-S TGI youth today. I am thankful to come from a family back home who supported me throughout my transition, and that I came across Queer Humboldt when I moved to Humboldt County when I did, so that I could feel less alone. That should not be the case. I should not be thankful that my family didn't kick me out for who I am, or that I have people who would stand up for me and fight for my dignity. The love and support that I have received should be the standard for Two-S TGI individuals everywhere. Two-S TGI individuals have existed for thousands of years, and were even revered or considered GOAT omens in some cultures. When living in a world that is so blatantly cisgender heteronormative and casually undermines queer history and existence, having our basic rights and protections is the bare minimum. That is why it is so healing to be represented today by a local government that took the time to recognize the collective work, courage, research, storytelling, and organizing of dedicated people behind the scenes to put together this proclamation, and why declaring Arcata a sanctuary city is vital. This proclamation is especially vital for Two-S TGI like myself and my fellow youth advocates, who all have varying backgrounds and yet can relate on these simple bases that we're Two-S and/or trans, and that our experiences of harassment, isolation, violence, and blatant or discreet discrimination for being trans is something that we can all relate to. We and other Two-S TGI deserve a proclamation that recognizes our existence and our right to survive and thrive, just like anyone else, especially the youth who moved here to find sanctuary and chosen families that understand and support them. For those who grew up here or have ancestralized this land lasting since the first generations, who would love to know that the place they call home has their backs. And for our transcestors, who faced hardships and sacrifices to grant us the freedoms we have today. This Two-S TGI sanctuary proclamation, being among some of the first to exist, is history in the making. Let's honor that history by upholding this proclamation from here on out and ensuring that Arcata remains a sanctuary for all Two-S TGI folks. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. So the next item on our agenda is going to be a report by a commissioner committee, and that has been postponed until our next meeting. So we'll go on to staff reports, and our city manager would like to talk to us for a moment.
So thanks, Mayor Stillman. I think you had a request earlier that I just review the rules for decorum at this meeting. There was some confusion at our last special meeting about when public comment would come in the order of the agenda, so I just wanted a minute to review that today, just so that we can ensure that everybody has the opportunity to speak. It's important that everybody be heard without intimidation. The next item on the agenda is for public comment during early oral and written communication, which speakers will have two minutes to speak. Speakers typically would have three minutes if they wait until after the business items. However, there are a lot of speakers, and the mayor may limit the speakers' time to two minutes this evening. With regard to decorum, I just wanted to review the decorum rules, and the rules have been put out in place to protect the right of speakers to be free of disruption, harassment, or intimidation. So just real quickly, speakers shall address the council and not the staff or other speakers in the audience. Comments should be limited to issues within the council's jurisdiction. Personal attacks, insults, using slanderous language is not allowed. Members of the audience will not be allowed to clap, boo, jeer, or take other actions that may intimidate speakers with opposing views. Signs are only allowed in the back area, where there's an area bound with blue for signs, and the reason for that is so that they don't obstruct other people's view or make it tough for people to move in and out of their seats. And in order to be sure that everyone has time to speak, we ask that comments be limited to each, the two minutes that will be allotted to each speaker for their time. If there's any disruptive behavior, the mayor will request order and ask that you please comply with that request. I appreciate everybody listening, and with that, I'll hand it back to you, Mayor Stillman.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Now we'll move on to oral communications. The City Council values your comments. The public comment period allows people to address the council on matters not on the agenda. The early section of public comment is limited to 15 minutes, and speakers are allowed two minutes each. If you prefer to have a full three minutes of your time, you may speak at the end of our meeting, and this will continue after item number 12. Please know that pursuant to the Brown Act, the council cannot discuss or take action on items not listed on the agenda. The council may respond to statements, and they may also be able to provide time for public comments specific to each item when the item is being reviewed by the council. So at that time, I would like to see if there's anyone interested in public comment. If so, would you please come forward? And the speaker?
I have a card.
And you have a card. You're number one. Please come forward and speak. And then we have number two, three, and four. Please start. Thank you, sir.
Oh, I, it's nearly impossible to get housing in Arcata, and I would like to facilitate getting a Hostels International here. I've talked to them, and it's really hard to get to who makes decisions, but I would think with people just vacationing, and students, and homeless people, there's a dire need for temporary housing. Right now, the university actually sent me down to the Heroin Flophouse in Eureka, and I spent over 85 days sleeping in my car, and I finally am moving back to Oregon, so I don't have to do that anymore. But anyway, if I could get somebody, when I find out more information, if I could get a contact person to tell them why I found out there's a few quirks. I used to live right near the hostel in Portland, and I was living in Washington at the time when I used it. And I went over there when I went back to visit, and they said that you're not allowed to stay or if you're from Oregon, which is kind of bizarre. And I would think that for travelers, they would be full all the time here if they had, no matter how big they got it, between students, homeless, and people trying to get into school. And it would really resolve, help resolve the housing issue. And I don't know. So if you're interested, I would like to facilitate the start and the contacts.
Thank you very much.
I'm Michael Kitchen.
You're not finished? I'm sorry?
No, I'm Michael Kitchen.
Michael Kitchen. Thank you, Michael.
Maybe I'll get ahold of the city. I'm only here for less than a week to retrieve another car.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Our next speaker, please. Yes?
Good evening. My name is Karpani Burns, and my request is that the City Council please put on the agenda the request for CalPERS to divest in the companies that are supporting the genocide of the Palestinian people. I haven't felt like you've been receptive to the issue. And on my desk is sitting what I was intending to speak about in order to try and convince you. One of the things I was going to say was that I was going to bring photographs of the children that are dying, that are dead from starvation imposed by Israel and supported by the US, funded by the US. I was going to add to those photos, pictures of the deaths of other, the other Palestinian people, the parents, the teachers, the religious, the, all of them, any of them, that are dismembered and mutilated, and totally destroyed and dead. I think the number is somewhere in the 50,000 now, maybe to 60, I don't know. But I couldn't bring those pictures because I didn't really feel that they would be accepted, that you would discernibly. As of today, five children, five children died of starvation today that the US and Israel are funding. The Zionist system is planning on scraping the entire Palestine of its people. How can you uphold that?
Thank you very much for your comments. Next speaker, please. Thank you.
My name is Ellen. I'm here tonight to demand that you put Palestine on the agenda. We have been speaking to you about Palestine for almost two years now. First for a ceasefire resolution, then a sister city, and now divestment from genocide. Two of the council members here asked you all to discuss divestment as a council. Why is the City of Arcata investing in CalPERS when it is invested in profiting from genocide? You have a clause in your investment policy that says you don't want to be invested in gross violations of human rights. Why aren't you following it in this case? What else could you be spending this money on? I think you're going to hear a lot of ideas tonight: housing assistance, mental health and addiction services, free healthcare. We are also, you are also aware that local governments are required to follow the international rulings against Israel's atrocities and end your complicity with them. The United States continues to send weapons and funding and provide political cover for this genocide, and so it is imperative on all of us to do everything we can to stop it. I demand you put Palestine on the agenda and figure out what needs to be done to correct this oversight. Also, I would like you to also remind the community that anti-Palestinian racist hate speech and Israeli propagandist lies only serve to prop up this genocide. The Holocaust of our generation is being denied again and again in this chamber, and it is making our community members who are Palestinian, Arab, and Muslim unsafe in Arcata. And it goes against your stated values. So please make it clear that this will not be tolerated in this chamber.
Thank you very much for your comments. Appreciate it. Our next speaker, please. Our next speaker, please. Thank you.
I want all of this to come off with no disrespect to any transgender or Two-Spirit individuals who are trying to work within a bureaucratic system to get themselves seen and get recognition. But identifying Arcata as a sanctuary city for trans people has no meaning when it is not a sanctuary city for homeless people. I moved here in 2020, and within six months, my trans landlord, who had on Craigslist advertised the space as a sanctuary home for queers, told me on Thanksgiving, after giving me several pastries, that I had to move out by the New Year. That's a fact. I have no rental protections in here. We don't have any eviction protections. We don't have anything in regards to housing for homeless people. We have nothing. And are the cops going to ask the people that they're arresting what their pronouns are? Of course not. You don't have actual education behind this. You've talked to the good leaders who are outside doing good things in nonprofits, and you've nodded your heads at whatever they've told you, and you've said, "Yes, we'll do that," and tomorrow, you're not going to do that. That's not with disrespect to these organizations. I'm sure they're doing good in the community. I'm sure that they will continue to do good despite you, despite me, despite anything. But if I have anything to say, it's that I don't feel that this city is a sanctuary city. I will fight to make it so for me and my people, and I will hope that all of my people will do the same, but painting it over with a rainbow flag doesn't change the fascist undertones, the increased policing that I've seen here since 2020. I've watched this city get closer and closer to Frisco, where I am told that I can't stand under an underpass because I look like a prostitute. That's where we're going. Sit on that. Chew on that.
Thank you very much for your comments. Our next speaker, please. Come forward. Thank you. Thank you.
All right. First of all, I'd like to complain about this formally. This is bullshit. It's like your time is more valuable than any of ours. We're all here, and we all have a right to have a voice. After that being said, I'd like to speak in support of Gaza. I'd like to, I mean, it's obvious, like, you guys are falling behind on moves that should have been made there. First of all, I believe I have a right, as much as anybody in this community, to come here and speak, but this place represents trauma for me.
Would you mind talking to us, please?
Yeah, I feel like it's, if not criminal, it's absolutely horrific and disgusting that I can't walk in this building, and as I enter this building, look and see some sort of a memorial or a plaque, shrine of some kind to Nancy who died on that doorstep. Like, nobody should have to cross that threshold and walk over her ghost without having her voice be heard right then and there. This is where she lives forever. Like, somewhere where we could put a candle, like, weeks after her death, they were removing candles that were burning that people came here and put, like, do something about that. There's got to be a budget for some kind of a plaque, or we could take donations, just let it be there, but we need some kind of a shrine for Nancy. And then, before I run out of time, I want full transparency on your little gateway project bullshit where you want to put eight-story buildings over where people are currently living, like, in existence, whether you like the trash that might accumulate or not, which is a problem you should deal with. However, there is nature in existing in this non-developed little area that you want to turn into eight, seven, six, and five-story buildings all around here, which is like, come on. Honestly, who's going to invest in an eight-story building in Arcata that's not trying to pitch it to somebody that ain't never going to live there that lives there now?
Thank you very much for your comments.
Mayor Stillman, could you just remind the crowd to refrain from clapping and cheering to try to keep it fair to all speakers, please?
So please, thank you for putting that back in there. So let's be sweet to each other, or nice, and not clap and make everyone feel odd. So thank you. Would you go ahead, please, sir?
Maybe after you start being sweet to the 40.
You're next, please. Would you like to speak, please?
Yes, just, I'm Rayner, and I'm calling again for the City of Arcata to become a sister city to Gaza City. I really hope that our community is able to gain that direct official cultural tie to the Palestinian people, and I also hope that Arcata divests from CalPERS. You know, one of the arguments against the idea that the City of Arcata needs to get involved in Israel-Palestine is that, well, supposedly that can't be our issue because we're way over here in America. That conflict is going on in another continent. But the fact that the City of Arcata has millions of dollars invested in CalPERS, and CalPERS is so heavily involved in the Israeli economy, that really exposes how much we are economically tied into what is happening. So please, divest from CalPERS and officially tie Arcata to Gaza.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker, please. Thank you.
Hi. I am here tonight to add my voice to those demanding that you put Palestine on the agenda, and specifically the genocide being carried out by the State of Israel. It is clear that what we've been witnessing, what we're witnessing now and what we have been witnessing for almost two years, it's not a war, it's not a conflict, it is an intentional, inhumane annihilation, attempt to annihilate an entire population. And I am tired of, and I'm sure many of us are tired, of watching livestreamed humans being tortured, being maimed, being starved to death. And so I really think it's time for us to put Palestine on the agenda. And for anyone who might argue that this has nothing to do with us and Little Arcata over here, you know, if your humanity is so tied to your own experience of things, if you can't have compassion for others that you might not know, then maybe, maybe think about what we could do with $3.8 billion that are sent to Israel every year annually from the US. We could invest that in housing, in education, in all these things that we need and care about, and people are talking about in this community here. And just as someone who, as a... And just as someone who, I, as a, as a mother, as someone who works in mental health, as someone who gives shit about my community, I, I just, I urge you to have a conscience, have, like, tap into that part of your humanity, like, imagine, you know, just imagine, and just bring it, bring it forward, like, be brave, you know? I know there's a lot of opposition, but it's, it's the right thing to do, to bring Palestine front and center. It's, it's a moral compass for our time. So please, just, like, consider and do the right thing.
Thank you very much for your comments. Our next speaker, please. Thank you.
I believe you know my name. What is sanctuary in a town where the police, capitalists, and politicians conspire to sweep encampments? Years ago, I worked with Sovereign Bodies Institute as a social researcher on the missing and murdered indigenous peoples crisis. Much of our work was direct support to survivors of sex trafficking. Many of our clients were trans, two-spirit, or gender nonconforming. Many were unhoused due to socioeconomic inequality directly tied to indigeneity or queerness. Many were unhoused as part of the unfolding of their own survival of trafficking or the impacts of trafficking. Many of us, regardless of gender, orientation, or race, are one paycheck away from experiencing homelessness. Many in other cities, particularly queer and trans people of color, are unhoused by the forces of gentrification, the same forces now being hired or enforced by the city council, contracted consultants, if possible, and the enhanced aggressive policing tactics. At Sovereign Bodies, a majority of our participants and all the gender nonconforming or two-spirit participants reported negative, traumatizing, violent, racist, and transphobic experiences during police encounters. That's why they turned to us for services and support, other indigenous survivors instead of the police. Trump administration has made it very clear, not only their perspective on people of color, transgender people, but also their perspective on homeless people, and, I think it is well-known, political dissidents and what should be done to them. As an indigenous, trans political dissident, I ask my fellow community members and this council, what is sanctuary in a town where the mayor will call a trans person of color's employer in order to exert downward pressure on their private political activity? Were I to lose my job, as appeared to be Alex Stillman's goal, I would, like many other queer and trans indigenous survivors, be at risk of homelessness and then be subjected to the John shelters of the world and further police brutalization. What is sanctuary for trans people when a petty restaurant-owning politician thinks they can bully working-class trans people of color? Be sweet? Be decorous? Don't make people feel odd? Mayor Stillman contacted my employer, despite the fact that I did not provide my name nor my employer, I was here as a private citizen, and you tracked down my employer, my identity, to punish and dissuade First Amendment constitutionally protected political activity. Decorum is designed to protect the speaker's right without fear of harassment or intimidation?
Thank you.
What else would you call?
And thank you for, and thank you for your comments. Your, thank you. Your time is up. Thank you. Your time is up. Moxie, your time is up. Your time is over. Madam Mayor. So, we have concluded our 15 minutes of oral communications at the beginning of our meeting, and so at this time, for more oral communications, it'll be after we finish item number, our last item on our agenda. So we're going to go on to the consent calendar now. This is how we have to do it. So the consent, I'm going to go ahead.
So the consent calendar.
So we said we were going to take 15 minutes on the consent calendar. We have one item, and then we're coming back immediately.
What do you want to do? I'm just going to, I'm just going to do it. Oh my God, you're just like you were the other day.
Shame.
Madam Mayor. So, should I just continue with the consent? Okay. And one.
We, 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 we have one item on the agenda, and we'll come back to public comment and listen to everybody. We have one item, it should take about five minutes. Can we just get one item through, and we'll listen to you for the rest of the evening? That's the last thing we have.
Oh my gosh. Can't we do our consent calendar?
And Alex, you don't need to read the whole item. You can just.
You don't want me to read the whole consent calendar? Okay, so, we approve waiving title of the text and consent to read the title-only ordinance. Approve the minutes of the city council special meeting.
Let's go. Let's go. We'll take a recess.
Okay, we're going to take a recess.
So we'd like to hear people's comments.
Your comments are live, but why?
We'd like to hear people's comments. So we'll either adjourn, we'll either adjourn the meeting, or people who want to speak. ... It'll be two minutes, and we can spend as much time as we need to hear from everybody in this meeting. And so I'd just like to ask that, there are a lot of people here, understand people are upset, but we do want to hear, we want to be, engage in a dialogue. It's tough at a council meeting, it's not a two-way question, it's a speaker, but please reach out. I've heard the people at the special meeting the other day, reach out, and I'm happy to have a discussion with you.
Watch out for the fire.
They called my dude.
Please tell them they're going to ruin our opportunity to speak for all of us if they keep it up.
So, so.
It's you. Well, you contact our employee.
We're back to order and we're going to, first thing we're going to do is we're going to vote on the consent calendar. Is there anyone on the council that would move for the consent calendar? Why? Doesn't matter. Could the city manager return to the staff table, please? Could the city manager return to the staff table, please? So I would like to have a motion on the consent calendar. Is there a council member that would move and second the consent calendar this evening?
I will make a motion to approve the consent, to approve the consent, accept the consent calendar.
And I'll second.
Adopt it and approve it.
It's been seconded and all those in favor? Oh, God. Are you sure? Is there any, are you sure you want to do that? Do you want to have any public comment on the consent calendar this evening? I don't see anyone that wants to speak on the consent calendar. So with all of that, we can have a motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. We do not have any old business this evening. We have no new business. And so now we're into oral communications. And oral communications, I assume there's quite a few people here that would like to speak tonight. And so we're going to make it for two minutes. And would you like to come and start speaking? Thank you very much for coming forward. Thank you.
I want to begin by saying that I am speaking as a resident of Arcata. I've been coming to these meetings for over 10 years and not once did I think that it would lead to somebody calling my employer for practicing freedom of speech, for practicing my disturbance on lack of procedural practices. I want to thank the folks who are here to speak up on Gaza and viva, viva Palestina. These issues are all interconnected. Every time you all choose to invest in anything that creates and enacts and empowers and feeds a genocide, I hope that you feel it for every single day of your life. This is not just signing something on a little sheet of paper and you get to go home. This is an act of feeding a monster that is currently destroying, devouring and destroying lives, people, culture, trees, animals. This is more than a geopolitical issue. I am very disappointed to hear that you are calling people's employers who are here to speak on y'all's actions as council and as a city, that we recite and that we pay taxes and that we live in, that we ride our bikes and that we clean and pick up trash without once calling the police. Where we work with people, talk with people, bring in resources without contacting the police. Because we believe in people's rights. We believe in people's dignity. As we do with the environment, with the birds, with the trees. We are all connected. Stop the sweeps.
Next speaker, the next speaker, please. Thank you.
I know y'all just declared this place a sanctuary city for two-spirit, trans, intersex people. But you don't seem to like them very much when they're a little too uppity. As an uppity trans person, an uppity brown trans person, I'd like to say I detest what's going on with the sweeps. I'd like to ask a rhetorical question. Do you know any of the queer unhoused people that you're sweeping? Do you know any of the queer unhoused people in Eureka? Do you know any queer unhoused people in general? Do you know any like unhoused trans people? And why are you sweeping them? I just like really hate everything that's going on and I hate this like collective delusion and acceptance to uphold bureaucracy over people's lives, over people's safety. It's a collectively agreed upon and accepted delusion, all of this bureaucracy stuff. You have power to do things and you choose not to do them. You have power to sign $122,000 contract without public comment on continuing these sweeps. You have the power to do things and you're not. And then of course, when it's not in your favor, you're just like, oh, but bureaucracy, we have to do this, we have to do that. Not letting the public speak when they want to, all of these different things, when it's not on your agenda, when it's not on your agreed upon agenda. And if this is actually a sanctuary city for brown people, for trans people, I want you to act like it. Because y'all are not acting like it at all. Y'all are sweeping people, y'all are killing people. Every time you sign a little piece of paper, you kill people. Y'all are killing people. How can you not understand that you can just sign other pieces of paper? You can sign other things. You could have chosen not to vote on that contract, that $122,000 contract with the very same person who operated Grants Pass where they ruled that it's not cruel and unusual punishment to sweep people when there's nowhere else to go. This is all a choice.
Thank you very much.
This is all a choice that y'all are choosing to do.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker, please. Thank you.
My name is Alice and I'm here to discuss my support for two items that should be on the agenda. The treatment of our unhoused neighbors and Palestine. These two issues are intertwined. Both have been intentionally left off the agenda despite long, loud, and continuous outcry from your constituents. I'm not sure what will get you all to listen to our pleas, so I'd like to examine why the majority of you are not. Malcolm X said, "If you're not careful, the newspapers will have you hating the people who are being oppressed and loving the people who are doing the oppressing." I immediately thought of this council. Where are you getting your information from? Who are you listening to? What are your own thoughts telling you? Every single one of us who has grown up in the US has been spoon-fed the rhetoric to be the best over everyone else. Have the newest devices, have the biggest houses, make the most money, and who cares about how this impacts everyone else? We have to actively unlearn what we have been taught so that we see what the most important thing really is. Valuing, honoring, and respecting that we are all human and we all deserve to have our needs met. We all deserve to thrive. No one is better than anyone else. There are no people that are the chosen people. We are all human. We all have flaws and talents and unique abilities that make us an integral part of this society and collectively of humanity. Now, when it comes to our unhoused community and to Palestine, it's imperative that we use criticality and discernment when making decisions. Should we be listening to a man who the council hastily and without community input hired to sweep our unhoused community members away as if they were not our brothers, mothers, sisters, fathers, and beloved friends? Should we be listening to the racist and hateful propaganda from people who are so filled with animosity towards Palestinians, they can't even say Palestine exists? Listen to and include the community that is most impacted by your decisions. Do not listen to the oppressor. Listen to those who are crying out in resistance to oppression.
Next speaker, please.
My name's Amy and I'm here to ask you to put Palestine on your agenda as well as to divest. I do not believe that we deserve to call ourselves a civilized community so long as we insist that our livelihoods are tied inextricably to the slaughter of human beings. Israel has stated clearly their goal of violent erasure of the Palestinian people. This has not been hidden from anyone. Twisted, penned, or spoken in different ways, made palatable for different audiences, but never hidden. Palestinians have been telling us for decades, and for these past 22 months, they have laid bare their most private agonies for us to see, to feel, to comprehend our complicity in their being displaced, tortured, imprisoned, bombed, raped, beaten, and starved to death. Every person in this room is a witness. Some of you have chosen to be leaders of this city. This places you in a unique position, one of your own choosing, to actually act, to hear the calls, the cries, and demands of your community, to divest from the military-industrial complex, to take some pride, to give a measure of dignity to our small town and say, "We will not aid and abet in this holocaust any longer." I implore you to look at the, sorry. I implore you to look at the evidence on the ground in Palestine, in Gaza, and in the West Bank, as well as here in our community. Palestinian children need you to show them that the adults who lead here are safe adults, that they can be trusted to use clear eyes and hearts and minds. I ask you as a mother, how you cannot take such simple steps to teach the youth of this community that there is nothing, nothing more important than doing everything in your power to stop a genocide. The children know, the young adults know, and they are not going to be proud. This ugliness, this unwillingness to stand on principles of dignity and integrity will catch up to all of us. Please act. Please take the time to deepen your compassion and your humanity. Please divest.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker, please. Thank you.
November 2023, we came here and we told you international law. We gave you a lesson, Meredith. When you were the mayor, we told you that it was ethnic cleansing, collective punishment, and we told you it was genocide and we were right. And ever since then, you have received in your email box the human rights reports from every expert and organization, and yet you are not moved to even honor your own written social responsibility investment clause. Shame on you and resign. We are done begging you. We are done humanizing people that should all. It isn't the Palestinians or homeless people in our community, or the trans people, or anyone who's the most vulnerable and the most endangered by you and your bureaucratic violence. It is in fact, you betraying your own humanity. You have dehumanized yourselves to make a business model out of genocide, out of the military-industrial media complex that smears the most decent people, the most vulnerable babies, and your own community members aside, who are Palestinians, and having 20 olive trees ripped up from the ground and stolen by the military there that is a terrorist entity on those lands. Settler colonial genocide is what you acknowledged, Meredith, when you come in, Alex, when you come in here, Stacy, when you come in here, Kim. Forget your comments. Where is your action to align your values to what you actually need to be doing with your position of power and influence right now? We will not beg you. We will say, resign. You don't deserve to be in those seats. You are sociopaths. If you are sweeping the unhoused, if you are using police to bring violence to our communities, we need solutions. We need people who will bring solutions. You are not bringing solutions. You are instead waging violence because it doesn't touch you. I've told you before, it's all connected and we all have. For two years, we've said it and for longer. The environment, everything is screaming out for mercy and you will not even provide it. From the seats that you're in, where you wrote your own, your own clause. Divest. Don't sweep the unhoused. Protect our al-Shi'iti.
Call a recess. Quiet, so we can let our other speaker come. So sir, please continue. Please go ahead.
Okay.
Thank you.
I wanted to come up here to point out something that hasn't been mentioned tonight, and I don't believe it was mentioned last time. People gave you all a due amount of scorn last city council meeting, but I don't think anybody specifically pointed out that for those of whom you wish this matters, you all violated the Brown Act of 1953 by skipping over the public comment section for the contract with civic.
Possibilities.
Civic possibilities, yes. So for those of whom, for those of you who actually take those kinds of city government procedural regulations seriously, you might want to consider that and the way that might reflect on you. Because that combined with the fact that you've shown yourself willing to contact people's employers and try and get them fired and engage in just blatant gangsterism, really just sets a precedent that undercuts any claims that you might make to being a sanctuary city for anybody who actually wants to stand on principle. If you had actually been to encampments, you would know that the people who clean things up, the people who actually do the legwork are the community members. People who come out and actually put time and their personal well-being on the line. And yet you've got people like John Scholter who are coming in and just taking credit for all of that. And you know, the thing that's come to my realization over the past year or so is that the Democrats and the GOP, you know Gavin Newsom has sort of thrown away whatever press, whatever facsimile he might have had of being sort of a bulwark against reactionary politics and enjoining forces with, you know, the most just cretinous scoundrels of the GOP and throwing the homeless community under the bus, treating them like they're subhuman, treating them like trash, and engaging in open dehumanizing language against them, foregrounding, you know, getting rid of the homeless population as part of your intentions with these projects and these contracts here. It's ridiculous, it's offensive, and it does not foster trust and respect in your community. And it makes you all look like liars and villains and just scoundrels, each and every one of you. So when people are calling on you to resign, that's why. I yield the rest of my time to whoever wants to go next. Fuck you all, resign. Please stop the sweeps.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker, please.
Hi, I'm speaking for Pat Kanzler. She couldn't be here tonight, but she asked me to, you guys probably know her. So Palestine, please put Palestine on the agenda. Palestinians are being starved by the Zionist Israelis in plain sight, livestreamed, and they are denying it. You've seen pictures. Our leadership has seen pictures, and yet they do nothing. The IDF and American mercenaries are funneling Palestinians to the GHF for food, where they have to walk miles to get there, and then they are shot. Videos of American mercenaries saying, "I got him," have been seen. IDF, whose souls are breaking, are admitting it, and they are still denying it. Then when it is shown that the hostages are also dying from starvation, the Israelis blame Hamas. Our leadership does nothing on both sides of the aisle. We need our local leaders to do something. Show them what morals we have. Starvation is torture. Two, divest from Calpers. There is a clause called socially responsible investing that prohibits the city from making investments to corporations with a record of gross ecological and environmental degradation, or in corporations that invest in countries, bad corporations. Don't do it. So dropping this amount of bombs, using this amount of munitions, it's actually contributing massively amounts to the climate crisis. And mass pollution of the air, water, and land, does that not violate your own bylaws? Three, the homeless. For years, the homeless in the 40 have been living there in their encampments, and now you want to send APD in there to destroy their belongings and throw them where? Will this cure the homeless situation? Will this help the homeless? Will this cost more to fix and not cure the homeless problem? It costs a lot of money to jail them, and the homeless cannot afford it. So who will foot the bill? Taxpayers, or shall we just put them in front of a fence and shoot them? Because that is basically what you were saying when you sent in the APD to break up their encampments. And four, Avilo. The Eureka City Council did it. Arcata should also prohibit their employees from using Avilo as they are destroying human rights by flying people for.
Thank you very much for your comments. Our next speaker, please. Thank you.
I'm gonna keep it a buck. As a tranny and an angry bitchy one at that, fuck you for trying to pass this, this whole thing of like, this is a safe sanctuary city for people like me. A week after you signed a contract with the people who committed a fascist violent act and enabled that in Grants Pass. I have been trans in this city and homeless in this city. If you actually want to make this a safe place for people like me, like, don't, don't even say you're doing anything. It's bullshit, and I don't want to hear it. I've been sexually assaulted for being trans. The police have kidnapped me for being trans. Grounds of a DUI at two and a half years of sobriety. I'm four years clean. And if I fucking end up homeless, I might get thrown in jail now. And you say this is about addiction. You say this is about public health, and it's not. It's about the fact that you want to capitalize on this city. You want to turn this into a cash cow. You want to sweep us dirty fucking scum build out and kick us out so you can bring in Bay Area tech. Shame on you. You have 120K. Why not spend it on shit actually Arcata people won? And I'm not cleaning up that shit that came out of my mouth. Fuck you. And then also like, dude, fuck you. You guys can't even do a ceasefire resolution. That's like not even, that's a bare minimum. That's nothing. Those are words on paper and you can't even do it. You would have allowed the Nazis to come and kill my ancestors. And I will never forgive you. I will never, ever forgive you. Do not claim to be an ally to trans people. Trans people hate, face some of the highest rates of homelessness of any population. If you do this, you do not love me and you want me to die. And that is not up for debate. Fuck you. I'm a bitchy tranny. I don't like you. Resign. You're shit.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker, please. Come forward. Thank you.
The starvation of children in Gaza and the violent police threats and sweeps of houseless people in our community are two sides of the same coin of a deeply ingrained in this country's history of systemic othering and of certain groups of people in order to strip them of their humanity and glorify their deaths for the sake of capitalist and colonial empire we call the United States. I was here in the special session meeting last Wednesday when you applauded a man who said his vision for the future was no homeless people in Arcata and approved a contract with the same consultants involved in the sweeps at Grants Pass with no public comment, which is a gross violation. I believe you are also in violation of your social responsible investing clause and Resolution Number 245-19, a resolution of the city council for the city of Arcata reaffirming Arcata's commitment to the values of community, inclusivity, environmental protection, and respect. With both the funding and removal of our houseless neighbors and funding of genocide in Gaza and refusing to put it on the agenda. In summary, I demand that you stop sweeping local homeless encampments who are neighbors, some living there for 10-plus years, and think more critically about where your funding and our tax dollars are going instead of investing in genocide and recreation that benefits corporations, some well-off residents, and tourists. Consider vulnerable populations that invest in voluntary social programs that help with harm reduction, housing, hunger, addiction, and mental health problems, as that would truly reflect the values of community, inclusivity, and environmental protection and respect. Finally, I want to thank Councilmember Schaefer for being one of the few of you with some integrity writing a letter to Calpers and call out the hypocrisy of not making public comment clear at last Wednesday's special session. I hope more of you will follow her lead.
Thank you very much for your comments. Next, please. Thank you.
My name is Sean. Thanks so much for allowing me this time to speak. I just wanted to talk about the Arcata Sister City project in Palestine. So I also wanted to say though, that this, this issue of homelessness, I wouldn't call you guys Nazis, right? But if you haven't done your homework and looked at the, the history of how the Nazis treat their homeless, then you would understand as elected officials how imperative it on is for you to, to actually do everything that you can to mitigate the situation. And as far as Calpers, we need to do that. We need to, you know, have this happen, you know, the state should have an ethical investment policy. It's an immense amount of funds that are being held. And so everything that we can do to, to make that happen, let's, let's find a way to get behind that. The Sister City is something that we can do right away. You, straight away, we can show that we can make an impact and, and demonstrate that, that our values are to, to do the right thing. And we, just last Thursday, we donated $5,400 to Gaza City for teens to tell their stories. They really wanted to do this fundraiser, to tell their stories. And because of this donation from, from contributors like, like yourselves, we were able to do this. So thank you very much for that. And, you know, we were told that it would be a big milestone for Gaza City, our contacts with Gaza City municipality, if they were able to do this Sister City. So please, let's get behind this. Favara Italy in Sicily has just become a sister city with Gaza City. So if Favara Italy in Sicily can do it, so can we. We're in touch with them and, and we're going to bring some more things forward. But 23rd of August, Saturday, we're gonna have a variety show and, and concert. We hope that you can, can come. We're raising money for water in Gaza.
Thank you very much for your comments. Our next speaker, please. Thank you.
Hello. Recently, I saw our mayor talk about how there are no sweeps happening in Arcata. If there are no sweeps happening in Arcata, it's because there is nowhere else to sweep. You've done it all already. There's nowhere else to go, as you all know. We need safe places for people who are unhoused to rest without threat of arrest where police are not present, because police did not come with my rental agreement. There is nowhere else to go except hidden or dead. Arcata is more embarrassing than any policy that Fortuna has passed over anti-homelessness because at least Fortuna is not pretending to be something different. Stop the sweeps and stop fucking with my friends, please.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker, please. Next speaker, please.
You guys are gonna be lucky. I barely got a voice. You're welcome, John, for all those black bags and all those stuff. If we had the money, we would have. If we had the money, we would have got rid of the trash, but we don't have the money. We did that on our volunteer time, on our times of our own. And you know what? There is lots of problems out here, like, there's not enough places for people to be even hanging out, especially if they know they're homeless. If there was a location for everyone to be, I'm sure they wouldn't be in the visible side of everyone. Also, too, if there was a way that... There are ways, there's ways that people can have dignity and whatnot for people to be human. All they want is somewhere to be, they've been pushed all to the 40 now, everyone's been pushed, all the cops say, "Go there." Now that there being a place else for them to go, what are we supposed to do? Are you planning to really just act like they don't exist? Because we got people that came from San Francisco that are here now, that they shoved them up here, all these other locations and stuff, but they are here, what are we gonna do? You can't just keep putting them in jail. I don't wanna pay for it. I work, I do pay taxes. I have been, I've been homeless out here for years before I got a place, an opportunity. I was homeless with my daughter. And what sucks is, if you don't have some kind of rental history here, it's impossible to get a place to live. I'm always willing to help. I clean up the neighborhoods of all the unhoused people, because I was unhoused, and I know how it is. If there was more trash cans or more abilities for us to get rid of stuff. And if you ever did call, if you needed needles picked up, we would be more than happy to.
Would you please address us? Thank you. Thank you very much. Our next, our next, oh, Lord. Okay. Our next speaker, please.
I'm tired, y'all. So I'm probably gonna ramble, and I'm sorry about that. I'm not gonna say everything that I want to say, so I'm gonna email all of you after this meeting. But first of all, I do want to reiterate what someone else said. The audio recording of last Wednesday's meeting where the contract was granted to Civic Possible clearly shows that no public comment was taken in a violation of the Brown Act, and that needs to be dealt with properly. We also need to talk about Palestine, it needs to be put on the agenda. Some of you have expressed interest in divesting from the US war machine, and your community is demanding that you do that. So please put that on the agenda for discussion and serious exploration, because our tax dollars are being used to slaughter and starve to death the indigenous residents of Palestine. And meanwhile, our tax dollars are supporting further displacement and terrorization of the residents of the 40, who have no place else to go, some of whom will not survive another displacement. We need services out there, we need dumpsters, porta-potties, showers, wraparound care, and there's room for it right there on the 40 at both ends. And you've got citizens, people in this room, who are going out there to clean up and bring food and help serve people. I mean, we're picking up the slack, the city needs to step up. That's where our money needs to be going. Stop terrorizing those people, let them sleep in peace, not worrying that the cops are gonna come. Arrest them for trespassing and arrest the citizens who are trying to help them stay out of the arm of the law. The citizens who are trying to protect their property and their livelihood.
Thank you very much for your comments. Our next speaker, please. So would you like to, would you like to speak, sir, would you like to speak next? Please, thank you.
So already hearing news about how apparently you track down people and try to, I guess, get them fired? I don't know exactly what's going on with there, but I can clearly see the indications of that you're trying to affect their employment. And based on the nature of the fact that you want to basically kill homeless people, I am putting together that you want to effectively kill them. You want them dead. And they have already said that, but I want to reiterate that point.
Killing children is profitable for them, as Tabitha said.
Word, word.
Would you like to continue to speak?
I like how you do that, like, I'm being interrupted and I'm not allowing that? That's cool. It's cool how you pretend that the uproar is interrupting the people that are talking, even though we are the ones that are upset with you. That's interesting. Also, I mean, it's already pointed out by the, you know, the whole thing with the two trans speakers, and just the fact that there's more trans people that are not happy with what you're doing. And you don't represent them well, and you are intimidating them, you are, you're killing them, and you're maiming them, you're doing all that. And I want to keep note again, this pro-Palestine and this homeless issue are tied in one in the same. I had a specific call, the first call I made to Mayor Stillman was, "Let's have a Sister City." She just tried to distract me away from doing it by saying, "You don't have to go through me, you can do it on your own." I knew you were a liar from the very beginning. So shame on you, and also, divest from Calpers, create a Sister City with Gaza City, and stop the sweeps. Resign!
Thank you. Our next speaker, please. If you would like to come and speak.
We're proud citizens of Arcata. Thank you. Please can go.
We came here over 20 years ago on the streets, Ivy addicted. And we've heard a lot of shade and things said about John Shelter. I don't know exactly what's going on with the sweeps, but I know that John Shelter is not going in and sweeping out homeless encampments, that's not the way that he operates. He cares deeply for the homeless. My husband's been employed at his job for over 15 years now, which he wouldn't have had had John not come along beside us, not top-down telling us what to do, how to do it, or beneath us, talking down to us. He came along beside us, and when our behaviors were wrong, he helped guide us into better behaviors. And that's what he does, is he engages people where they are at. I've worked with him going into homeless encampments. I've seen what he does. I know how he works, and I know his heart. He's not going in, he's not against homeless people. He wants to build bridges, but to build a bridge, you have to understand both sides, what's going on on both sides. You can't build a bridge just knowing, I mean, an engineer, I'm not an engineer, but if you're gonna engineer something, you need to have understanding of all your components. And John seeks to do that. And he seeks to honor the housed community and the unhoused community, and help the unhoused community to understand where the housed community is at and vice versa, so that we can work together and walk together.
And we're all in this shit together.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you very much for speaking. So is there anyone else? Next, please. Next speaker, please. Thank you.
I'm here to speak on the sweeps. I just wanted to say that, you know, it should be really quite obvious at this point that, like, without any other living options, sweeping people is just extremely cruel. And it was recognized as such, as cruel as unusual behavior, and prosecuting these things is well out of order. Humboldt has a rate that is comparable, if not higher, than places like San Francisco and LA. About one in every hundred person is suffering from lacking shelter, a roof over their head, water, running water, sanitation, or electricity. And that's really quite appalling. It's the worst in the country, like, it's up there with the top five in the country And hassling people for the small amount of stability they've managed to, like, secure is, is like, where is your heart? Like, that's why there's so much frustration, like, please recognize that, like, come on. And this pattern of callous indifference also seems to be seen in the lack of action around the call for divestment. You know, this conflict's been going on for a long time, and all I'm hearing on this issue is equivocating and fumbling around while people are suffering from our investment money. We're putting money into these issues. Just for a larger kind of contextual dynamic, Cal Poly Humboldt has the least populated catchment area out of all of the CSUs, which means the student body is more dependent on housing for educational success, which is one of the main reasons why Cal Poly Humboldt has one of the highest failure rates out of all of the CSUs. It is not as academic rigor, but it's the peculiarity of the living situation. This failure has knock-on effects, takes people from being an economic benefit to an economic burden.
Thank you very much for your comments, sir. Thank you. Next speaker, please. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Yanidi, and I have been in this country for 20 years. And as a queer person and as an immigrant, I have not once been safe. I, every day I wake up, I see the similarities between what is happening in Gaza and what is happening to my people here. I see how people have been massacred and disappeared in Gaza, much like the children and immigrants in this country are being dragged out of their homes, and they're being starved, they're being murdered, they're being human trafficked. How can you not see that ISIS trained by the IDF? How do you not give a single fuck that someone can come in here, drag me out, and murder me? I can end up in a cage, and you don't give a single fuck that I can be disappeared and separated from my family, my loved ones? I don't understand how you can go home and claim to love your children, while there are some of us that will never see our siblings again, that will never see our mothers again, that will never see our fathers again. How can you sit there, hold the position that you do, and have your head so far up your ass that you do not see it? How can you not care? Sanctuary Day is coming up, and you will be tarnishing what we have worked for in this community. If you do not do anything, you will be siding with Nazis, you will be siding with ICE agents, you will be siding with people like the Israeli troops. How can you not see that, genuinely? Is your empathy and your humanity that far gone that any fucking paycheck just, it's gone? Really? Really? For what? Your children are not gonna have a future if I am not here, if you don't do something for us. For what? Fuck every single one of you, free Palestine, and bye-bye!
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please. Thank you.
Okay, so I'm probably pretty young coming up here, but I do want to say is, if you want to sweep, you know, obviously you're sweeping anyway, because you guys suck, but I don't understand how you can sit up there every day, go home, and say, "Oh, my gosh, I'm making better for the community, I'm making better for the world," when you're literally not. You're sweeping, you're ruining other people's lives, you come into someone else's house, you come into someone else's house and disrespect them? No. You respect, you respect, you come in with respect. So I don't understand how you are letting these people go somewhere, like, where are they supposed to go? Like, you guys are sweeping them, and you guys are coming into their houses, taking down their houses, and you are taking what they have, the only thing that they have, and you are throwing it away. You're throwing it away, they have nowhere to go, you literally cannot be homeless, literally anywhere, because obviously, they are taking, they're putting people in jail, they're taking people's pets, like, okay, for a thing is, you take someone's pet, like, that's their only, if you're homeless and you take someone's pet, that's their only family, like, that's all they got. Like, sure, you have other people, other friends, but that was their family, and you go out and you take their animals for what? Oh, because I got bit by an animal, blah, blah, blah. Okay, that's, that was, that's not even true. Like, sometimes, these animals out here, they, like, they are being treated with the utmost respect, and people don't understand that when you're homeless, the only thing that you want to do is take care of that pet and take care of yourself. But people have this thing where they think, "Oh, my gosh, if you're homeless, you do drugs. Oh, my gosh, if you're homeless, you do all these bad things. Oh, my gosh, you're homeless, you go and hurt children. Oh, my gosh, you're homeless, you go and you can't do anything for yourself. Oh, my gosh, you're homeless, you can't, you can't do anything for yourself." When that is not true, these people are trying to do stuff, but you will not let them, you will not give them a home. Everything's so expensive.
Thank you very much. You, you've, you've, you have, you've spoken, you've already, you've already spoken. Don't...
You're, you're gonna...
So you've already spoken, sir, and so would you like to come?
Next!
Would you like to come forward and speak, please? Thank you.
All right. I'd like to clarify, ma'am, for the last speaker. For her birthday, she did a cleanup at the 40, and John Shelter took credit for it, that's what she told me, she wanted to relay. So usually when I'm up here, I'm talking about Gaza Sister City, and I'm also talking about divestment or urging Calpers to divest from things that fund Israel. Today, I'm up here because you guys just signed this resolution, like, formally saying trans people are like, you're gonna protect them. One, according to the National Center for Transgender Equality, one in five trans people experiences homelessness. Homelessness is connected to this thing that you say you really care about, trans people. So I would say, the only thing I have to say is, stop the sweeps. Sweeps are, like, cycle perpetuating. They don't fix anything on their own. It might clean things up for, I don't even know how long, very, very short amount of time. I think looking for longer term, you know, making housing, like, available here, I'd love to see public housing, municipal housing in Arcata. I, just as an individual, would like to say, to stop the sweeps. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please. Thank you.
The thing about fascism is that nobody goes into it believing they are a fascist. Nobody holds the exact same style of bigotry as the other, you know, the president going on TV shouting that Haitians are eating cats and dogs, plenty of people saw that and thought, "Okay, he's insane, he's a fascist," right? Because not everybody hates immigrants. It's about finding the group that you personally are willing to dehumanize and exploiting that. And for you, you prove that that is Palestinians on the other side of the world and homeless here in your community, the people that make you specifically uncomfortable. Alex Stillman, you've been a politician as long as I've known your name, and I can't think of a single fucking thing you have done for this community. I don't know why you're still here. I don't, yeah, I don't even have anything to say to you. Like, you are incompetent, senile, jaded, just quit your job.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please. Thank you.
It's clear that if you have loved ones in your life, the people who are sitting in front of me, they don't tell you the truth. I have loved ones in my life, and they tell me the truth when I'm being stupid, when I'm being harmful, when I'm being, you know, not true to myself. So I'll be here to tell you that you're being stupid, and I'll just put a lack of a better word, because right now my heart's racing, I'm very angry, and I'm only gonna go off the top of my head. The fact that you opened this meeting saying that you care about trans, Two-Spirit, Indigenous people, and then at the same time, on your agenda, you're wondering whether or not you're gonna brutalize trans and Indigenous and Two-Spirit people, and then steal their homes? And then also ask us to, like, have decorum? Don't be sad, don't cry, don't yell, don't have everyone be on your side? What the fuck is that? It's really asinine that you think that what you're doing is right. On my agenda, when I wake up in the morning, I wake up, I water my plants, and I'm looking for a job, because if I can't find a job, I won't have a home. And then what? I can't come to y'all and ask for where I'm gonna have a home? I'm gonna go to my loved ones and figure out what the fuck I'm gonna do. I don't trust you. I don't trust anyone here, because what you're telling me is different than what I see. You've brutalized my friends, my family, my relationships in every word, and it's, it's fucking stupid. So if you have loved ones, I would really, really just challenge those beliefs, because really, they don't love you. You probably don't love yourselves, because if on your agenda you're wondering whether or not you should tell people if they need to get the fuck out of their home, not even telling them, just ripping the shit from them, that's not love. You don't have it in your hearts. I hope you don't sleep at night and think about everyone else here, and I want everyone to be rowdy. I want them to yell and sell shame. So fuck you, shame, shame!
You've already spoken, so there's a, there's a, there's a person behind you. Did you want to speak?
We're the resources.
So would you like to speak? Would you like to speak? So would you like to speak? Would you like to speak? Would you like to speak?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Hi, my name's Tricia Murphy, thank you for allowing us to speak. I gave you all a packet of photographs of children, mothers, fathers, fathers carrying their, their blown-up children, mothers holding their skeletal babies. I listened to a doctor describe what, what a child or a person goes through when they're starving. Israel's starving Gaza. They haven't allowed food in since March. The food that they're getting now, I listened to an interview, a guy named Tony Aglier, who just came back from Gaza, he's, he was at the three different distribution, food distribution sites, he witnessed the evil, the crimes that are going on there, and he also had a very profound experience with a little boy that's probably about as big as this little boy Mateo back here in the gray sweatshirt. This little boy came to him, hadn't eaten for days, he came barefooted, they had to walk miles to get there, he kissed this man's hand, and I guess that's a very high compliment. And he, and he said in English to him, while holding his face, in his hands, he said, "Thank you." And when he left, he was shot and killed by the IDF, because they're shooting people. It's, it's a trap to kill more people. And it's like Orwellian, they call it the Gaza Humanitarian Foundation. It's anything but. They have razor wire, they're using bullets, and the cops back here probably know, they're green bullets, they're made to penetrate heavy armor, and they're using full-on automatic weapons. The, the man who's reporting all this did a Tucker Carlson interview, he went on Democracy Now, he's making the rounds, and he described what he saw there, and it is pure evil. It's pure evil. And that's what we're supporting. If, if you don't want to divest from Calpers, that's one little thing we could do, and in times like this, we should do all we can. We, we can't do much, but we should be doing all we can. And I support the people here that are getting swept off the streets. Gavin Newsom lost a shit-ton of money, millions and millions of dollars, and they have nothing to show for it. It's not because giving money and, and making solutions happen, it's not because that doesn't work, it's because there's greedy people that are stealing that money at the top. I support boycotting Israel, I support a sister city.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, City Manager. My name is John Shelter, the person that most people are talking about in this area. What people don't realize is that we've been working out there for two months.
Well, let him speak, please, it would be nice, we've let everyone else speak. So thank you, thank...
A little bit of education.
Thank you.
What they don't realize is that working with me took a price on the city of Arcata. You had to work under my rules with new directions if I planned on working. We successfully worked in many different areas without the call of law enforcement.
Okay.
Should we just end the meeting?
So thank you for going on, completing your comments.
Okay, so what they don't know is that the whole two months we've been working there, I have been working with the city manager, law enforcement on not doing sweeps in there. There was 27 camps when we started, there's 25 camps right now. The 90,000 pounds of trash, the 90 pounds of trash did more for harm reduction than anything else in Humboldt County. We reduced infection...
That is not what harm reduction is, you are a liar and you are informing the public, just like you do on your Facebook when you take...
Can we, can we call for orders so we can let him speak?
Let, I would like to allow him to finish speaking, just as everyone else has had an opportunity to speak tonight. Please continue.
Even law enforcement has backed off, they've been called out, they've checked police records.
You know, we let you all speak, now we're wondering why? Because we have to allow... Would you like, would you like to continue speaking?
Absolutely, ma'am.
Thank you.
Law enforcement, if you check the police records, has been called out there one time in the last two months by me.
So please let him continue to speak, you might not like everything he says, maybe he doesn't like everything you say, but we should listen. You're taking his time. You have to re, thank you.
So what I'm trying to say is that the individuals out there mean a lot to me. Be done if everybody quit interrupting me.
I know, if, we would like to have you continue to speak, as other speakers have had the opportunity also to speak this evening.
I would suggest that City Council, I would suggest City Council put this on the agenda so we can educate.
Can we please allow him to speak? Thank you, thank you.
I do agree with them, we should put homelessness on the agenda so we can speak to this, maybe a presentation about new directions to help them understand what we do. I am so sorry.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Yeah, so I'd just like to highlight, like, the fact that, well, first of all, I don't really like talking up here, I don't really like talking to any of you, you're all kind of just like, you're lining your pockets with blood money, and I think that's made very clear with how you treat John Shelter and our community members in council. Simply put, like, it's very clear that you're making money off of this, and we can all see it, and it's just kind of disappointing, but it's not even really disappointing, it's just normal reality at this point. I think, yeah, like, like John Shelter is your little flower mercenary, and like, y'all are protecting him and y'all want him in here, so you can like manufacture consent for this, make sure John Shelter looks good, and so he can go do whatever he wants in community. But the fact is, is that no one fucking sees, no one, no one, no one sees through that, no one, no one sees past that. We all see what's going on, and we're not going to forget, we're going to remember what's going on, and we're not going to give up. We know who's us, and we know who's with us, and just like, that, like, you have cameras and razor wires in the corners of your eyes, and they're never going to go away.
Thank you. Our next, our next speaker, please. Thank you.
From Palestine to this stolen native land, stop forcibly displacing people. Human beings are more important, are more important than your prophets. Protect our LGBT community. You should honor your social responsibility clause, and you should have divested a long time ago. Stop the sweeps. City government must meet human needs and free Palestine.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please. Thank you.
I wasn't entirely sure that I was going to come up and speak today, but it's become very clear that since last, community members came up to speak up for the rights of unhoused people in this community, that more time has been spent contacting people's employers and coming up with excuses, rather than actually taking any action to stop the violence that's being perpetuated by your police department. It's also particularly horrifying to me to hear John Shelter invoke the words of harm reduction when he spends days, weeks, years of his life harassing the primary harm reduction organization in this county on Facebook constantly. He posts pictures of our staff, he has called the police on our staff with false reports. I was once at an encampment checking in on our participants, while he was there simply cleaning up trash, I never spoke to him, I never spoke to any of his staff, all of a sudden I hear that the police have been called, because supposedly we're harassing his people. The police showed up, nothing happened, because nothing happened, and yet he claims he doesn't work with the police. He sends out letters to people who are living in encampments, claiming that he's there doing environmental cleanup work while he's just destroying their homes. I have known dozens of people who have left their stuff out, who have believed that they could trust him and then find their belongings, their homes taken. I, his name is on the arrest tickets of people at the 40 as a witness. It's, it's horrifying to me that he continues to be framed as someone who's doing compassionate work, when that's not what's happening, when he's actually going out of his way to continue spreading stigma and moralized horror toward, toward the people that we serve, the people that you guys should be serving, the unhoused members in our community who are so stigmatized and marginalized already. And then he goes beyond that to go out of his way to try and harass and slander and spread false information about the few people in this community who are trying to actually help these people. I'm shocked and appalled, and I could say stop the sweeps until the day I die, and I probably will, and it's unclear to me if you'll ever hear me, because clearly you don't care.
Thank you very much for your comment. So, um, oh, yes. Please go ahead and speak, thank you.
I sent you an email yesterday, two of you responded by email, I appreciate that, at least you acknowledged that I sent you an email. I hope that email is published so that those here in the audience are watching and others can know what I was sharing with you in that email, I don't need to reiterate it here, a lot of people have talked about some of the similar issues. I just want to remind you that one day, everyone will always have been against us, put things on the agenda sooner as opposed to later. Too bad it's later, but you could have done it sooner, and please put a task force together for the situation we have locally.
Thank you very much. So with that, I'm wondering if we have anyone on Zoom?
Yes, we have hands on Zoom.
And how many do we have?
Twelve and some are still raising.
Okay, thank you, let's start with Zoom then.
Okay, Abraham, please go ahead.
Thank you.
I want to see if we can identify the first Zionist. In 732 B.C., the Assyrian Empire conquered the Jewish homeland and displaced many of its citizens. A small number stayed behind, and their descendants are still living in Israel today. They were occupied by Babylon, Persia, Greece, Rome, the Byzantines, the Turks, and the British. Each occupier recognized Israel as the Jewish homeland, and each occupier called it the land of Israel. Persian Emperor Cyrus the Great believed in a right of return for the Jewish people and the establishment of a Jewish state in their traditional homeland. His grandson Xerxes the First followed the tradition. At first, Xerxes was bamboozled into adopting a resolution that called for the extermination of the Jews, but he discovered that his wife was Jewish and that the resolution would mean the death of her family, so he issued a new decree, the Jews were to be armed and given the right to defend themselves. Were Cyrus and Xerxes the first Zionists? It's hard to say, but one thing's for sure, if you agree that Jews have a right to govern and defend themselves, that makes you a Zionist. Zionism isn't a secret conspiracy to steal indigenous land, it's just a belief in Jewish legitimacy. That's what the ADL says on its website, quote, "Anti-Zionism is antisemitism," end quote. So don't be intimidated by an angry mob that already hates you and hates democracy. Your Zionism makes you part of an illustrious history of Jewish allyship. Instead of endlessly discussing an illegal sister city relationship with a terrorist organization, I think we should adopt a resolution to condemn antisemitism, something everybody in Arcata would support. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker, please.
Arcata Arts, please go ahead. Arcata Arts, please unmute yourself. I see you've unmuted yourself, can you please try talking? Sorry, we can't hear you, I'm going to move on to the next speaker, if that's okay, Mayor?
Please do.
Username Bring, please go ahead. Username Bring, please unmute yourself.
Maybe we should go to the next speaker.
Samsung SMA42, please go ahead.
I wonder if there's a problem with our Zoom.
Is it okay if I check with IT real quick?
Yes, please do.
So it works with Zionists, but not anyone else?
Right. But the second Zionist couldn't speak, so that was...
Edward, please unmute yourself.
Good evening. Arcata currently has one sister city, Kamowapa, Nicaragua. The partnership began in 1986 and has fostered a rich exchange of cultural, educational, humanitarian projects between two communities. Initiatives have included infrastructure improvements, scholarships, and health-related support, often funded through Arcata's annual Eye Block Party celebration. The project was born out of a desire to foster non-political, people-to-people communications during a political tense time in the 1980s. It was aimed to build relationship with Nicaragua that transcended Cold War politics. The contrast between Arcata's sister city relationship with Kamowapa and the proposed one with Gaza City is striking, especially in terms of public response and political sensitivity. Kamowapa had broad support and little controversy. It was initiated as a humanitarian and cultural exchange rather than a political statement. It was community-driven. The partnership was focused on education, health, and infrastructure, with events like the Eye Block Party raising funds. There was minimal, if any, opposition. There was no documented controversy or resistance from city officials or the public. Gaza City, on the other hand, has been contentious and politically charged. A proposal led by activists from Redwood Peace and Justice Coalition and Humboldt for Palestine, who have petitioned for a sister city relationship with Gaza City, has been met with opposition from city officials, a majority of Arcata City Council.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker, please. Sani, please go ahead.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, I'm Sani, I grew up in Arcata and I care deeply about this community. I'm here today because this city deserves honest conversations grounded in truth, especially when it comes to who we choose to partner with. Let's get something straight, the connection between Jews and Israel isn't up for debate, it's a fact. In Arabic, the word for Jews is Yahud. Yahudi means Jew, Yahuda means Judea, our ancient homeland. These words come from the same root. Jews are native to this land, we are not outsiders or colonizers. Since we want to talk about the importance of listening to one another, let's listen to what is actually said and done by those in Gaza today. I oppose the proposed sister city relationship between Arcata and Gaza, because sister cities are meant to share, shared values, democracy, human rights, and a shared community values. Gaza under Hamas has none of those. Since Hamas violently took control in 2007, 18 years ago, there have been no elections, no free speech, no free press, no religious... no free speech, no free press, no religious freedom, and no LGBTQ+ rights, no space for dissent or criticism. Palestinians who speak out against Hamas are jailed, tortured, killed. Journalists are silenced. Women are oppressed. Children are raised on hate. Humanitarian aid is stolen and converted into rockets. Hamas uses civilians as human shields while digging literal terror tunnels under schools and hospitals where they held hostages. This is a regime that kidnapped over 250 hostages on October 7th, many still held captive. It continues to fire rockets indiscriminately and endangers the people it claims to represent. And yet, some want Arcata to create a symbolic partnership without acknowledging any of this. Let me be clear.
Thank you very much for your time. And our next speaker, please.
Amy, please go ahead.
Hello, can you hear me? I'm speaking today to stand in solidarity with the sister-city resolution, the call for divestment, and the communities that are currently being affected by the sweeps by the Arcata Police Department and sanctioned by the city council since you guys are in charge of the police department. Humble is really not like other places, and I think that's such a gift. We have a constant reminder of what makes life worth living. We have these trees that reach to the sky. We have ocean lapping at our shoreline. We have all of these natural beauties that give us the opportunity to remember that each moment that we have on this earth is a gift, is precious. And for anyone to spend any bit of that time participating in harming other people is not only a waste, but it literally erodes your souls. We don't have to do that. The world that exists is a world that people make up. We agree to participate in these systems, and by the same turn, we can also not agree to participate in them. You're given the opportunity every single day with every breath to make different decisions. I implore you to choose life, to choose to support those who are supporting others, to find creative and innovative solutions. This is what humble is known for. We have a marsh that treats wastewater as opposed to a concrete facility.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker on Zoom, please.
I'm sorry if I'm mispronouncing your name. Sabra, please go ahead.
When some of the people here today proposed that Arcata and Gaza become sister cities, they demonstrated the three Ds of antisemitism: double standards, delegitimization, and demonization of Jews. Through this process, you manufacture consent for the genocide of Jews, both in Israel and globally: the explicitly expressed goals of Gazan's democratically-elected government, the explicitly expressed goals of Gaza's educational institutions, and the acted-upon goal of not only Hamas and the other five military wings of Gaza's government, but also of the ordinary Gazan civilians who took part in the mass rape, mutilation, and murder of innocent Jewish women, children, and babies on October 7th, 2023, and the kidnapping and continued torture and starvation of innocent hostages ever since. In the 365 days between October 7th, 2023 and October 7th, 2024, Gazans launched over 13,200 Iranian-supplied missiles at Jewish civilian targets, including hospitals and schools, even though Jewish schools and hospitals are not used as missile launchpads and command centers as Gazan schools and hospitals are. You have a double standard about their explicitly stated and demonstrated goal of genocide, and you have delegitimized the proven reports of mass rape and mutilation and the torture and murder of infants, even when the Gazan sadists videotaped it themselves and celebrated it gleefully in the streets of Gaza. And when the idolized sadists of Gaza's rape culture include teenagers trained and armed with machine guns and grenades and knives, you call killing them an act of genocide.
Thank you very much for your comments. Our next speaker on Zoom, please.
Lisa, please go ahead. Lisa, please unmute yourself.
Hi, I am speaking with you tonight about the accelerating loss of trees in our urban landscape. My impetus in speaking tonight is the wholesale removal of many mature eucalyptus trees along Bayside Road, but I have observed the removal of many large trees throughout the city in recent years. It is increasingly important to retain trees and tree canopy in urban settings as global temperatures warm and deforestation accelerates through commercial logging, development, and forest fires. Redwood trees are global stars for storing carbon, with mature trees storing 2,600 tons of carbon per hectare. What is less known is that eucalyptus trees store over 1,900 tons of carbon per hectare, pretty good. I would like the city of Arcata to consider developing a no-net loss of trees and tree canopy ordinance. Many other communities have taken this step, and it is time for Arcata to join this effort. These ordinances specify that tree canopy that is removed must be replaced onsite, offsite, or with a fee in lieu paid into a tree replacement and maintenance fund. Generally, these ordinances apply to trees over six inches DBH. Replacement tree species are based on the size of the tree removed to ensure that over time, an equivalent canopy volume is replaced. If it is unreasonable for the replacement to occur onsite, then a fee is imposed. Adjustments, reduced fees for property owners may be determined for those where cost is hardship. The ordinance can also specify fines for violation of the ordinance. Thank you for your consideration of this matter. Good evening.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker, please.
Scott, please go ahead.
Hi, I'd like to talk about what it feels like to be a minority in Humboldt County right now. I'm very involved in the Jewish community, and I'm not sure that, you know, the audience who is so vocally out to share their hatred, that, you know, there's not a Jewish service, religious service or event, that doesn't have armed security now in Humboldt County. Now, think about that. Are there, is there another group in Humboldt County that celebrates a holiday and has to have an armed guard? And since I'm a security volunteer, my job usually starts early where I cruise the parking lot for bombs, and been in touch with the FBI on certain situations. And that's happening right now, right in Humboldt County. So I just wondered whether, you know, everybody takes that into account. And, you know, the fact that there are people in Israel who are protesting every day against the war, and yet, you know, you have nothing but vitriol for anybody who's involved in Israel. So think about that. This is not a one-way street. You know, there's a lot that seems like ignorance to me, and you're not taking it, allowing for the fact that people are human on all sides of this situation. And just recently, the Arab League, certainly no friend of Israel, has declared that they think that Hamas should surrender and give up control of what they have going on in Gaza. And it's because they know that Hamas is the reason why this mess currently exists. I know, for another thing is that, I don't know if you realize that the majority of Jews in Israel are actually descended from either having never left Israel or...
Thank you very much for your comments. Our next speaker on Zoom, please.
I apologize if I'm mispronouncing your name. Sav, please go ahead.
Hello, my name is Sav. I am a resident of Arcata. I am Jewish, and to briefly touch on the issue of Palestine, free Palestine, fuck Zionism, not all Jews are Zionists, and I'm ashamed that there are Jews in this community that are falling for all sorts of horrible, false truths, and it's really hard for me to talk about this issue because I have family in Israel as well, some of whom believe in acting in violent ways against Palestinians who frankly are my relatives as well. That's all I'll say about that. Fuck Zionism. I'm a Jew. We're out here. Not all Jews like Israel, or, yeah. But that's not why I came here today on Zoom. I wanted to speak on the sweeps that are in fact happening to our houseless community members. I myself was almost houseless this month, and I'm lucky enough that I have family members who are able to support me. But I would just like to say that as someone who was almost houseless this month and who very well is at risk of that consistently, despite the fact that I am a hard-working individual, take police out of our communities, take police out of situations where we're trying to help people. Sweeping homeless encampments is not the way that we help people, and where the...
Thank you very much for your comments. Our next speaker on Zoom, please.
Tamara, please go ahead.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Good evening. The Israeli and Palestinian people are suffering, without a doubt. The most Israeli do not want the suffering to continue. They want the hostages to come home and they end this war. The majority on both sides want the torture to be over, but the radical leadership of both Gaza and Israel refuse to alleviate the pain and move toward peace. My family carries this tragedy every day, and I know that the children of today will carry this failure into future generations. I'm really sad. I'm very well, I remember very well being 15 years old, celebrating the Oslo Accord on the street and the hope of the peace between my homeland and my fellow neighbors. Extremes on the Israeli broke the accord by assassinating the courageous Prime Minister Rabin. Despite the, Israel continued to, despite this, Israel continued to offer peace opportunities. Extremists from Palestinian side decided to walk away from these opportunities. Here in Arcata, it's not about Israeli and Palestinians. I wanted to believe that we all want this community to thrive. We want the security and safety and for the life, and the life to flourish. We can have different opinion about how to resolve the Middle East crisis, but we cannot afford to bring the crisis here to divide us even further. I want the commonplaces of the cities, such as the farmers market and the city council meeting, to be hostility-free zones. I've maintained a practice to not call names to people who have different opinions than mine, and I'm asking the city council also not to allow verifying...
Thank you very much for your comments. Our next speaker on Zoom, please.
Rifa, please go ahead.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, perfect. Hello, I would like to make my statement clear that I would like the support for a sister city and the ability to divest from cowpers and also to stop the sweeps. Throughout the Zoom meeting, I have heard many inaccurate claims on the history of Gaza, like Hamas uses human shields and hides in hospitals. There has been no evidence for that. All the claims have been from Israel. The UN has not, the United Nations has not found any evidence that Hamas has used human shields also for the election. Hamas rightfully won the election in 2016. It was the United States that purposely tried to coup Hamas's election, and Hamas resisted it. Israel has, with Netanyahu, has continuously denied negotiation between Hamas for the hostages. And I would urge the city of Arcata to adopt a sister city and do their, and divest from cowpers any way they can. Sorry for speaking nervously. That's all I have to say. Have a good night. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker on Zoom, please.
David, please go ahead.
Hi there. I'm a member of the community, and I'd like to speak out against the sweeps. I think handing people a piece of paper and telling them that they need to leave what little comfort they have managed to eke out for themselves is not the humanitarian, sorry, is not the humanitarian and ethical flex that people think it is. I think that whatever y'all are calling it to make it look better is not taking away from the, or it takes away from the fact of what y'all are really doing, which is sweeping and bulldozing people's belongings and people's small comforts in light of them having nothing else. Please stop the sweeps, call off your dogs, and yeah, thank you so much. Have a good night.
Thank you for calling. Appreciate your comments. Our next speaker, please.
Sheri, please go ahead.
Good evening. Quick note regarding international law. The U.S. is not a state party to the ICC, the International Criminal Court. The U.S. wants to retain its constitutional jurisdiction over our own citizens. The city of Arcata is also not a sovereign state party to the ICC. The city of Arcata has the duty to uphold civic, state, and federal laws. The city of Arcata does not engage in foreign policy and has no duty to discuss or draft matters of foreign policy. City council members, please do not cave to the pressure to agendize the sister-city issue or the divestment issue. Please concentrate on city business. It is a tragedy that so much of our city council meeting time for almost two years has been occupied by this discussion. Please don't reward people who curse, who yell and scream, or use frightening rhetoric. For example, a speaker at the June 4 city council meeting stated regarding his political opponents, quote, "It is disgusting that we tolerate these murderous people spewing lies, but their time will come. Their time will come." That speaker's statement is an indictment of the entire sister-city and divestment movement. Unless each public speaker disavows that violent rhetoric, why should they be rewarded with any action taken on their proposals? Thank you for your patience and all of your hard work.
Thank you very much for your comments. Our next speaker on Zoom.
Rachel, please go ahead. Rachel, please unmute yourself.
As someone of Jewish descent, whose camp surviving grandmother protested Israel in the 90s, whose Jewish father protested Israel in the 90s, who is disgusted every day by fellow Jews who fall for the same propaganda tactics used against our people for almost a century ago? Fuck Israel. Fuck the idea for refusing multiple peace treaties. Fuck every soldier who has the blood of both innocent Gazans and Israeli hostages on their hands. Free Palestine. As a transsexual, I have so much respect for the queer folk pushing for support for our local 2S G.I. community. I love them, but for city councilors to claim allyship and claim sanctuary status in the same meeting where they break their own decorum to top down trans people and misgendered trans people after being told their pronouns in an earlier comment that was explicitly recognized, it's disgusting and you disgust me. Resign. I yield my time. Fuck you. Fuck John Shelter.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker, please.
Sarai, please go ahead.
Hey, friends. Oh my goodness. Okay, please go with me on this journey. It is very, like, disheartening to hear that people would rather sit, like, they would rather condemn, like, cursing and truth-telling and other different things than the literal sweeping away of people's possessions. Like, the way that the guy said, like, "Oh, I have to check for bombs. I have to blah, blah, blah." Like, that is a regular condition of marginalized folks and has been forever. Like, I literally feel like I made this comment two years ago. Like, you're just now feeling these pressures when houseless folks, when trans folks, when black folks, when indigenous folks have consistently been the canaries in the coalmine for worsening conditions to come, for world conditions to come. So if we're not able to be in solidarity with houseless people in Arcata, we're not going to be able to be in solidarity correctly with people in Palestine. If we're not able to be in solidarity with people in Palestine, we're not going to be able to see the ways that we can be vast in our care for houseless folks here. It's disgusting the way that people would sever us. It's disheartening the way that people would condemn and try to make respectable decorum, all these different things about being in the chamber, when people are literally dying, when people in the community are dying. There was literally just reggae on the river where there was tents. I'm sure there was fucking trash. I'm sure there was fucking porta potty issues. I'm sure there was all kinds of, all kinds of different shit dealing with people camping out there. And we swear we can't do it for our literal community members, for people who have been out here, for people who have contributed, for people who have kids in our schools, for people who are-
Thank you very much for your comments. Our next speaker on Zoom, please.
Yes, Rick, please go ahead.
Hey there. My name is Rick Toledo. I'm a representative with Students for Democratic Society Humboldt. I want to comment on this as well. I think it's just horrible and disgusting that somebody would condemn swearing and cursing when there are children being starved and bombed and forcibly starved by Israel, and our tax dollars, every one of us, our tax dollars are going towards that. So yes, it is a local issue. It is, because our money goes towards that, and we have a responsibility, whether it be at the local level or the federal level, or wherever we have the power to impact any kind of change, to do what we can to help them, to do what we can to divest from the things that increase the suffering, this genocide, this horror, these starving children who look like walking skeletons. How can we of us live with that on our, if we have a sister city that provides aid, then we need, if we test for cowper, then they send a damn letter, but the best thing we could do right now is put it on the agenda. Let's really talk about, let's talk about the ways that we can help those stuff there, our tax dollars, because of the US military. This is something we can feasibly materially do and responsibly do. I also comment on the sweeps. We should not be using armed police officers.
I think we lost him. He had a pretty bad reception.
Yeah.
Our next speaker on Zoom, please.
Blake, please go ahead. Blake, please unmute yourself. Blake, please.
I took one second. I had to allow, doesn't matter. I think that what we're seeing in the world is an acceleration towards fascism. I don't think the fact that the United States is not connected to the International Criminal Court is a flex by any means. I think when we start to see the effects of climate change and deteriorating health conditions, probably due to the fact that we're all covered in microplastics in every inch of us, we're going down a path at an incredibly fast speed that if we do survive by some hope, it's going to be recorded every single time we chose not to understand that our liberations are intertwined, when we chose to punch down, when we chose to dehumanize or not see the plight of the people who are suffering the most. And I think that you should understand the weight of your choices and the fact that your grandchildren in history will look on.
Are you through, Blake?
I'm done.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker on Zoom, please.
John, please go ahead. John, please unmute yourself.
Hi there. Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. I'm asking you, please don't consider becoming a sister city with a community that's run by Hamas. They have declared their goal is to genocide the Jews. So this is a real paradox situation. We shouldn't make a contradiction of our values and isolate people from our own community. And it is complicated with this military-industrial complex. There's a lot of problems we need to reform, but our money also goes to prevent Israel from being genocided by all their enemies. So there are other things to consider, so I want to offer that as some balance in this highly contentious conflict going on. It's very complicated. Love and respect to you all. That's my time. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker on Zoom, please.
Shannon, please go ahead.
Hi. Thank you. I just am here to echo, like, I don't know how many people have said it today and have said it before. Please put Palestine on the agenda. Please have these discussions. I think the Redwood Peace and Justice Center folks have done their due diligence in showing that there is a collective interest in your community to establish a sister city relationship with Gaza. It's really important to stop genocide. I don't know why I have to even say that. You should already know that. It should be inherent in your being and in your core. And anything that we can do to acknowledge that what is happening right now to native indigenous peoples, not only in Palestine, but in Africa and here in our country, is wrong. I never thought I would become an activist at 40 years old. Becoming a mother has completely opened up my heart in ways that I never could have ever imagined. And seeing what I've seen in the last two years, happening day in, day out, every single second, to precious, innocent, beautiful children, has completely opened my eyes. And I am so thankful to the Palestinian people who have endured so much for helping me become more aware and for making me pick up books and actually read. One of the other callers, her name is Tamar Kriegel. Did you know that she actually-
We need to keep comments not directed at other speakers.
Yes, you can't really address other people, and that's why you were disconnected. So next time, please don't do that. So then, our next speaker on, our next speaker on-
So she can continue if she wants, but the comments need to be directed to the council, not to other speakers.
Would you, would you like to continue? Is she still online?
I'm not seeing Shannon here.
Yeah, she's on.
Okay. Our next speaker on Zoom, please. Maybe she'll call back.
Shannon, please, Shannon, please continue.
Thank you. Thank you very much. So I won't say her name, but she actually went to the co-op, okay, and actually said, "Take this book off your shelf," a book that is accurately, historically accurate, published by a very well-respected Columbia law professor from a very well-respected publisher. That's what we're talking about here. They don't want you to know the truth. They don't want you to talk about it. They're scared to death. If we talk about it, it will shine a light on it, and the light's already been shone. And we aren't going to stop. We're not going to go away. We're going to keep coming.
So thank you very much for your comments, Shannon. And our next speaker, please, on Zoom.
Spinster, please go ahead.
Hi. Can you hear me all right?
Yes.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that the way that you operate your council is an absolute shame, absolute shamble. Addressing the whole council right now, I just want to let you know, you make my day a little less happy, and I hope your day is a little less bright today, tomorrow, and every other day that you oppress the people of the Farty, the people of Palestine, the people of the whole world with your genocidal little fascist regime. You're sitting here nodding, listening to everybody, giving everyone two minutes to comment, and then you're going to go home and you're going to do absolutely nothing. Yeah, I'm pretty disappointed in y'all. I generally say I'm pretty proud to live here because of the people. The people are wonderful. The people are beautiful. And y'all don't represent this place. All right, there's a lot of car going by. One sec. Yeah, I just don't like you very much. Each and every individual, one of you, has a hand to play in everything that's going on in this town, and it's really frustrating. It's really frustrating. There's no actual recourse to get shit done, and it's really upsetting. Y'all could put anything you want on the bill to vote on. Y'all could, y'all could put anything you want on there, and you choose not to. Joke's on you. I commented earlier in person already, and I'm double-dipping right now. Yeah.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker on Zoom. There's no, okay, there's no more speakers on Zoom, so we'll go back to our council meeting. And we have no reports. Oh, I don't have any reports. Council reports, please. Do you have council reports?
I have nothing to report on.
Any council reports? Okay, we do not have any council reports.
Maybe just one, just to remind people that we have the lantern, floating lantern ceremony on Saturday, and we will also be offering folks, I'm sorry, let me just pull up some- From 9:00 AM to 1:30, there's a lantern making at the Arcata Farmers Market. Tables will be set up for supplies. At seven, people, between 7:00 and 7:30, people will be gathering at the Arcata Martian Wildlife by the Klopp Lake at the end of South Ice Street. This is an opportunity for folks to, for your departed loved ones and ancestors that we all hold dear. So I hope to see you there. The event itself, the lantern floating, will happen at 8:40.
Thank you, thank you very much about that. So we have no, we have no dates for future meetings, and we do not have a closed session. We have no closed session reports. So with that, we're adjourned, and thank you all for coming this evening.